Roll call, please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you. We'll stand and do the pledge, so we're gonna open and close the LPA's, is that where we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, on the LPA agenda, there was one item scheduled tonight, which was a, the Shiva Vishnu Temple rezoning. That item, as of yesterday evening, was withdrawn by the applicant, so therefore, there is nothing on the agenda for consideration tonight.
Okay. Do we need to open and close that? What's the process here, Steve? I mean, Keith, on getting on the agenda?
No, Mayor, it wouldn't require a motion and a second for discussion, because there's no item to consider.
It's been withdrawn.
Gotcha.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right.
You didn't even need the meeting.
All right, so, but, I gotta do the pledge all over again for the regular meeting.
What happened to the mic? Do you wanna do any public comment on it?
No, there's nothing. There's no discussion. It's dead. So, anybody that's here for that, it's, it's like, the applicant pulled it, so we can't really talk about or even discuss it, so there's no discussion related to it, but... I guess that anybody can always bring anything back, but let me tell you this to make you a little better. It'll take five votes of this council unanimous consent to make that happen. Okay? So... Agreed. We appreciate you all coming out. You're welcome to stay. We, we have two meetings a month, so come anytime. You can come talk to us in public comment anytime you want about any issue that's not on the agenda, so we thank you all for coming. Always appreciate you all coming out here, because you are the ones that put us in office up here. So, anytime you wanna vent, complain, thank us, whatever it is, feel free to come out and talk to us. So, we appreciate that. So, thanks for coming out, but feel free to stay. If you haven't been in a while, maybe you'll, it's an eye-opener for ya, but other than that, that agenda item will not, not be talked about or brought up, so, we're good. All right.
I put a motion under adjourn.
Okay. Well, we adjourned it, so we gotta stand and do the pledge over.
Yes, we do.
All right, so forgive us, but we gotta stand and do the pledge over to go into the regular meeting.
That's good for ya.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call again, or no?
Yeah.
Do the roll call again, Russell, please, just for...
The next meeting.
Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Present.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Awesome, thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five.
Do we got public comments?
Want the public comments?
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you. We are ready for public comment, starting with Robert Lewin, second by Scott Kleiman, third is Bill Chappell.
All right, well, one other thing I wanna do ahead of that, if I can, one, one quick. Mary McVie, where are you? Come on, come on up and say hello to us, dear. A commissioner from Weston, so we have to acknowledge them, and we greatly appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, but you don't have to do that every time I come. Actually, it'll keep me from coming. But, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're glad you're here, Mary.
Thanks for coming out, appreciate it. All right, back to our list, sorry about that.
All right, so, Robert Lewin, followed by Scott Kleiman, followed by William Chappell.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lewin. I am building a house on Sterling and Malaluka. I'm here to talk about my water line, and I apologize, I'm a little upset about it, but the water line is in the ground. This water line was okayed by Southwest Ranches, permitted by Southwest Ranches, inspected by Southwest Ranches, and the water is at my front door, and after spending a lot, a lot of money, whether it's 2,000 or six figures, plus, the water line is at my front door, and I got too bad, too sad, after going through all the processes. You can't unring this bell. The bell is rung. It's in the ground. So, this was permitted before this Broward County new ordinance. So, either I'm grandfathered in, great. If I'm not grandfathered in, then we've followed along the land. So, either way, the line's in the ground, it's under 1,000 feet from Stone Creek, for some reason, that seems to matter. So, all I'm asking for is, I did, I went through all the steps necessary of Southwest Ranches, and I just want this put on the agenda, because I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm blindsiding a bunch of you, 'cause you have no idea what the heck I'm talking about, but all I want is the water line that's in the ground, permitted properly, put the, put on the agenda, so we can have that discussion. The last thing I wanna discuss is, I'm not a carpetbagger, okay? I've been, my family has been in Sunshine Ranches since 1974. Some people have been here a little bit longer, but my family has been here since 74, and that's why I wanna come back here. It's family, it's, you know, we were here, I have a couple, a minute left, when the only paved roads were Hancock and Sterling. Went to school with the Hancock Twins. So, there, you know, I have family here, and this is where I wanna raise my kids, so if you can get the water on the agenda, so it could be discussed, if you guys can do some legwork on it, so we have a good conversation, it would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Kleiman? No problem. William Chappell, followed by David Kozinski?
William Chappell?
Will you?
Yeah, you know, William.
Gay? Your husband's not here, is he? I don't know, but...
Chappell?
Are you speaking?
Chappell?
If you are, I'm calling you William from now on.
Come on up, Willie.
I guess not.
Chappell? Chappell? French? Chappell?
Maybe they were here early on.
All right. David Kozinski, followed by Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, council. David Kozinski, 6411 Hollety Trail. First speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, as our regular scheduled meeting is set for next Wednesday at 7:30, our public speaker will be Marilyn Stevens from the Census Bureau promoting, signing up for the census. I'd like to encourage everybody to come out. Great, great entertainer. Not so happy is, had reports of speeding still, ongoing dump trucks along Mustang Trail. I'm hoping that this enhanced traffic enforcement is going to quash that. And then last, this morning, I left my home dark, and it was a little chilly, and left my bag of garbage out, and got home, still there. So, looks like they missed my trash pickup. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Fred Siegel, with Jim Lasky being the final speaker.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Let's talk bulk pickup. Four months now, going all the way back to November, we have missed at least once pickup on the scheduled day every month, and this month, we have missed both pickups on the scheduled day. I called in, spoke to Sandy today, and she told me tomorrow, we'll get our pickup. That's over a week with the bulk sitting out there from Saturday. I was also told that if they call in and say their truck is broken, we can't do anything about putting any fines or anything else in effect to them. When we did this contract again, supposedly, we put in their guarantees that we would get service, and if not, after a certain level of non-service, fines and stuff would take effect. I find out that as long as they call in, truck's broken, so you're not gonna get your pickup on time, there's nothing the town can do. Seems to be a big loophole that the bulk truck can drive right through, and I don't like it, and I think the town oughta do something about it, so that Out West gets their scheduled pickups on the day that they're required, and the other areas also get their pickups. But, I know 199th of the last month, November, December, January, there's been at least four, maybe five missed pickup dates out of six. So, very, and you gotta remember, there was no pickup on Christmas. So, please, do something about it, and let's get them in shape, and a broken truck for month after month after month excuse just doesn't float. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Fred Siegel, here at the moment, under my capacity, as Chair of the Broward Soil and Water Conservation District as an elected official. I just wanted to make the council aware, I just got back from the National Meeting of Ameri, of American Farm Bureau, and at that meeting, it was announced by USDA that they are now in the process of creating a Office of Urban Agriculture. So, where USDA has, through natural, through the Natural Resource Conservation Service, has only had programs available to rural areas, it looks like we're now gonna get some programs available to urban areas as this progresses. I will keep you informed, but I just wanted to let you know that's now been created, and they're in the process of coming up with their rules.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, just a, just a quick announcement before Mr. Lasky. Just wanna let you all know, I just got word that the traffic light at Dykes and Griffin is back in service.
Okay, thank you. Good going. Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. Who ever thought that somebody could turn in a crazy survey accompanied by a site plan and a set of drawings, got approval of it, and violated so many rules, including your own setbacks? Notice to adjacent property owner, who's ever seen that out of set of plans? Well, it's turned into a prescription, prescription easement, all right? And I, I don't see anybody really addressing this, and it was without my consent, my permission. I had to find out the long way. I had to look at the site and be able to figure out, I should call Russell and get a copy of all the documents. You have all the documents. There's so many things in there. Dee had a very good point the other day. When we have all these boards, okay, we have some deficiencies on this board. I had a guy, that's a licensed general contractor, I assume, that didn't understand the kind of inspection that a transfer switch needs. So, when you install a generator permanently, you gotta go through the fire department. The fire suppression people have the expertise by the law to be able to inspect that kind of a job. You know, guys don't know how to do a load calculation on the generator you got here. 900 amps for this hall. That's not the way it would work under the Broward Building Code. You'd have to have an engineer size it. That's why I told you it was so crazy. But however, I understand that the, since the fire department mandates that size generator, there's no thinking involved. I don't know what their, their ideas were when they specked it out, but you guys didn't do a calculation, even though you might have pretended you did. You got 900 amps out of that thing. If you did a load calculation, you'd probably be down to a 50-amp generator. But anyway, there's so many things that need to be discussed in an open environment. Dee Schroeder's exactly right. I never would've thought she would have such a damn good idea. All right? I never would've thought, I give her a lot of credit. She's really grown in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, it's off to board reports.
All right. Any board reports? No board reports. We sure? Okay.
Going once, going twice.
No board?
Nothing ever.
Wow. Okay. Councilmember comments?
I'll lead off.
Go right ahead, Gary.
Okay, thank you. As usual, thank you, everybody, for coming. Lot of things got moved around on the agenda tonight, so not, not necessarily a bad thing. A few things wanna go over, and one very interesting, something I wanna share with the rest of the council and with all of you out there. Coming up, just for the record, we have the Fun Horse Show on the 15th of February, from 8:00 to 4:00 at the Equestrian Park. That was the postponed one in December. We have the 29th, a very busy day here in the park. We have the 5K Run from the Sikh Society, where all the benefits, all the money is given out to the Education Advisory Board in the form of the scholarships. And then, at night, we have Bingo at the Barn from 6:00 PM till whenever, and I believe you can get tickets at the front door, I mean, at the front desk, sorry. And this is all on the 29th. Just an FYI, town hall's closed on President's Day on the 17th, and we have the Flowmobile here on the 27th in, from 10:00 to 1:00, and I urge everybody to use that. Now, I wanna talk, I'll get into something a little more serious. This is actually, we're gonna toot our horn here a little bit, so, this'll be pretty nice. Since I've been on the council, and this is me tooting my horn, since I've been on the council for the last 10 years, we've ran a surplus budget every year. Some of it's been small, some of it's been large. This year, it's even better. Due to outstanding management between legal, administrative, financial, land use, planning and zoning, we're projecting over a million-dollar surplus. The exact number, I think, is 1.1, but I'm just gonna stick with a million for right now. And that is, you know, to outstanding management and a better revenue stream than, than we originally projected. So, the question is, what do we do with this money?
Let's have a party.
Huh? Well, I, I wanna bring this up, so we think about what we, we're gonna do with these funds, you know? We have all, some different ideas, and I think we need to all think about it, and then come back and maybe have the public involved, I'm not, I'm not sure how, how, how to structure this, or give a, a project list to Andy. But, some of the things that I were thinking of was drainage projects, or any park projects, road striping, signage for streets. I remember 18 months ago, after the hurricane Irma, we had a whole bunch of bent street signs all over the west side of town, and I asked Andy if we could get them all straightened up and re, put back and everything, and basically, he said, "We're out of funds." So, you know, so there's still some of that going on. We have maybe an offset to TIS Door, we may wanna use it up against next year's budget, we may wanna put it in reserves, but we've gotta do something with it, whether it just sits there, or we plan projects with it. So, I, I should think we should come up with a list of projects and priorities, and give it to Andy to organize and implement, and I think that's something that we all need to, you know, this warrants further discussion down the line, I'm just bringing it up now to...
Some brainstorming.
Yeah, to, so we should all, we should, I think we should come up with a list of projects that are, the ones that, you know, like, the front fence at the park at, at the Rolling Oaks, they've been talking about getting that off for the ATV problem for months. The west side fence on 190th at the Country Estates Park, stuff like that, you know? We may wanna devote some dollars to that, some signage somewhere. I don't, you know, I don't, there's probably a whole list of projects that we could do that are small, but they're not in the budget. When I say small, under, you know, 10,000, under $25,000, where this money could accomplish a lot of that. Or, we could say, hey, we're just gonna give it all back to you in the form of a rebate, you know? I mean, there's lots of different ways we can go with that. So, it's just something for us to think about, and I think we need to bring it up in the next couple of months, and put together some sort of project list of what we'd, what we'd like to do around town.
Yeah.
So, I'd like everybody to think about that, but...
Will do.
So, and we'll get the official number here soon, from Financial Director Marty, someday, soon. That's all I have.
Okay. You'd like to go next?
I just have a couple things to talk about.
Go ahead, Bob.
Andy, I'm not familiar with the water pipe issue that, I didn't catch the fellow's name, but that our resident brought up during public comment.
Robert Lewin.
Robert Lewin.
Robert Lewin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think we probably should know more about why he pulled a permit, was cleared for it, and it stopped, for whatever the reasons are. This is the first I've heard of it, so, I believe it's the first I've heard of it.
I'm gonna like teach you of any...
Yeah, there's some legal on that, isn't there?
Sure, there's nothing unusual here. Mr. Lewin's plans came in probably two, three years ago to build his home. Part of his, at that point, actually, Cooper City was under a restriction and couldn't provide additional water services. At some point during construction, he decided to abandon the use of a deep-water well system and to go to a water line. So, he started the process of installing a water line to connect to...
Permitted?
Permitted through Cooper City. I don't know, that's a question for Rod, I don't know, did we permit it also?
Yes.
So, so, a permitted water line. Cooper City then came to the position where, okay, the line's in the ground, you know, we, we need to know whether or not we should turn the water on. During the same time, the county's working on changing the law. So, if he turns the water on, it could, could, there's a potential right now, make it a requirement that every homeowner within a quarter-mile of that home will similarly have to extend the line and connect, which will then create a domino effect where they have to connect, connect, connect.
Sure.
It's up to you. It's a policy decision whether or not you wanna take the risk and allow him to connect now, or you wanna wait until the county makes a decision on how it wishes to proceed. Based upon at least two meetings, it might've been three, but at least two meetings, we raised this issue legally to tell you what was happening with the county. I think, actually, Councilmember Hartman, you're the one who initially spotted the issue.
Right.
So, the, the question is, do you want to take the risk and, and allow him to connect? If so, it can easily be put on the next agenda for his connection agreement, or do you wish to wait for the county to make its decision?
Right.
And then I'll throw out one third option. My third option, which is a, a bit more risky, and I'd love some feedback from you all tonight on this issue, is that we have Mr. Lewin contact all property owners within a quarter-mile of his property to advise them that there is a possibility that if he connects to water, a water line, that they may be forced to connect and to find out whether or not they have any objection. If they remain silent, then at least it could be said that you went so far as to make them have required notice, you know, so that they would know it was coming. I mentioned this earlier to Councilmember Jablonsky, and he shared with me the still concerns about the domino theory, that then it would still potentially be able to spread. While I believe that legally, we are doing everything in our power to fight it at the county level, there is a risk here. So, it's up to you all to decide at this point whether you wanna proceed and allow them to connect now, or whether or not you wanna wait 60, 90, 120 days, I don't know how long it's gonna be, until the final version of the ordinance comes before the county.
I have a, I have a question. Why, why would, and, and I'm not understanding it, why would the county force anybody else to do it? I mean, what's the purpose in it? You know, if one per...
They're, they're changing the law.
All right.
They're changing the law.
Yeah, the county believes that, based on Flint, Michigan, and other, you know, issues nationwide, that groundwater could be contaminated as a result of all of our septic tanks, you know, essentially. So, they believe that by getting rid of well water, and by getting rid of septic tanks, they can cure a lot of issues that people are causing to the environment.
Yeah, but to get rid of a septic tank is a whole completely different issue.
It's the same law. Same law.
All right.
What?
They're together, so let, let me tell you a couple of things. I just got back from Tallahassee, I'm sharing, you know, the conversation here. So, I had a conversation with Greg Ross, the Mayor of Cooper City, who, on the water issue, doesn't have a problem with everything that's happened and where it's going. I also saw Steve Geller up there, and he impressed upon me that by today or tomorrow, that they would have the language that we believe will be satisfactory to us, and it goes to their commission, I think, next Tuesday, they have a meeting, and our next meeting is until the 13th, unless we wanna...
The, the, okay, two things just to add to that. What I've requested, and I said this at the last meeting, but this one's better attended, that I have requested the county to do an exemption for rural ranches and rural estate properties, okay? That would mean that if you are currently rural ranches and rural estates, at the time the county adopts its ordinance, that you would be exempt from the, the automatic mandatory connection requirement. That's what we have requested. I have not seen that language go in yet, but that's what we've been pitching for the last six months or so, while they're looking at it. When the item comes before the county commission, whether it's in two weeks, four weeks, whenever eventually they bring it before them, that will just be the initial shot across the bow as the language exists today. It will then be at their following meeting, that they will address any amendments to that language. It's just the initial advertisement saying, "This is what's coming," and then after that is when the amendments are proposed. So, you're, you're, whatever that meeting is, it's the next meeting that they'll actually start considering whether or not to amend the language.
Good. Keith, just to follow up on the rural ranches, rural estates, you're confident that covers every property in our town?
No, because there are some properties that are ag, but they're not willing to go that far. The way I was able to get rural ranches and rural estates is probably in the 1980s, I wish she was here tonight, Little Sayre and others, including Sally Broken, when she was on the Planning Council, changed the language of the Broward County Code of Ordinances to state an exemption for rural ranches and rural estates. It's the current ordinance of the county's proposing that actually strikes out our current exemption. So, all I'm asking them to do, which politically is feasible, is saying, "Leave our exemption alone and don't touch us."
Right.
So, that's essentially what we're doing.
So, then all the properties that are currently ag 1 and ag 2 are not exempted, and they could have the will of the county and the state brought down on them for piping in water. What'll that do to our town if parts of it are now underwater and others are still on well and septic tank?
Well, the state always can trump the county...
Right.
Anyway, in, in, as it relates to this matter, a 1 and, and a 2 today could be forced to connect.
Right.
So, it's not changing anything.
Okay. Good. All right. So, um, sorry.
No, no problem, thank you.
So, the, the comments we heard tonight about, you know, the town basically stopping him from getting water is, is something that we need to make a decision on.
He has it, it's piped, all we have to do is, once, once we approve it, they can turn it on.
Right. So... The impact to that could be everybody in line from his house to Cooper City...
Correct.
...may have to connect.
Correct.
It could.
So, there may be some unintended consequences of allowing him to connect.
It could.
Okay, but on, on the flip side of that, that's, that could come from the county.
Right.
Cooper City is not impressing that, and so they won't...
It is the county.
Yeah.
I mean, that's who we're worried about here.
Right.
Because what, what, I don't think people understand, and this is, it's a tough call, that's why we're up here. You know, we, we'd love to do what's best for him, but we gotta think of everybody, and if everybody on that's, on that pipe has to connect, how many people are impacted by that, and how many people may have to spend several thousand bucks to connect to Cooper City water? We have another issue that I wanted to bring up as well. I was contacted by, you know, again, unintended consequences. It's Louisa Chung, she wrote me a letter, and I, she says, or somebody mentioned that she got in touch with you also, Doug.
He did.
This is a property out on, on, it's right on Sheridan and 185th Way. That's the property that recently was cleared and fenced in over the last, probably the last year. You know, they're extremely upset, because what we're doing right now with the nursery ordinance is blocking them. They can't, they've got a tenant ready to move in, they've made the property improvements that the county... They can't, they've got a tenant ready to move in. They've made the property improvements that the county, excuse me, we're probably requiring for certificate of use and also South Broward Drainage District that Kevin needs. They're all ready to go, but our zoning in progress, they claim, is what's stopping them at this point. So, you know, the nursery ordinance discussions that have been going on, how long?
We have no, we have no zoning in progress.
Okay.
It's expired.
Long time ago. I sent Andy an email confirmation of that.
Alright, I know Andy had followed up on this today, I believe. So, they would be able to now move forward, come down, assuming they're in compliance with whatever our requirements are.
We're not blocking them at all.
Okay, that's good to know.
One thing I, I just want to correct, and thank goodness Jeff is here to remind me, because he thought of Gabe's property. Although your ag, your land use is R-R-R-E. Is your zoning, but your land use is either rural ranches or rural estates. Because Jeff said all the properties in the town have that underlying even ag. So, alright, you guys can fight it later.
So, then, back up then for a minute, we're confident that the town has rural ranches or rural estate zoning throughout?
Land use.
Be covered by the exemption?
Jeff believes that most properties in the town that you would worry about has it. Gabe's saying otherwise, I, I would have to look at the map. But, but I know that it puts back in play our current restriction. So, so the question that I have, which is what I suggested to Mr. Kleiman, the Lewin's attorney, is maybe there is a way to split the baby here, knowing that politically we're gonna do a really good job at the county, and maybe say to him, you know, send out that letter to the quarter mile, you know, he doesn't have to send it to Cooper City. So, it's really not that many properties, and seeing if there's mass opposition. And if not, you know, if no one cares, then maybe allow it on your agenda.
I got, I got one question, because Starkweather, a resident, just got city water recently. What'd you do? Come up to the mic a minute, please.
He said the other night from the county that if you're gonna build a new house within a half a mile.
Of water.
They were gonna make you, from water.
Quarter mile.
They were gonna make you bring the water there.
Right, we're, we're getting exempt from that.
But he did say that they were gonna put an exemption in there too, that they weren't gonna make everybody else hook up to it. And that was gonna be in the writing.
That's what we're waiting for. That's what he's talking about. That's what we're waiting for.
That was gonna be in that language.
That's what we're hoping.
That they're not gonna make you, everybody else.
Even Senator Geller.
Senator Geller.
That's the one we've been constantly lobbying.
James Starkweather went with me as a resident to Tallahassee.
Good, okay.
And that is accurate. That's exactly what we're lobbying for.
Yeah.
And that's what he promised.
So, we need to get that in writing?
No, it's.
That's, that's what I'm implying.
So, just to clarify a couple of things here, it's not just our wells and septic tanks.
I can let anything do I want.
Anybody who's lived here all of their life realizes that the wellfields on the east side that used to be in Dania, they're all, they're saltwater now. The ones that are coming up on the turnpike there, just west of Fort Lauderdale Executive, they're at risk right now. The saltwater line used to be just a little bit to the west of the intercoastal, back when I was a kid. Now, because of all the water we're pumping out of the ground that we're using, I mean, it's not like it's being wasted. And the pipes that take the water from the Everglades and send it out into the ocean or south, you know, we're, we're not replenishing the aquifers nearly as quickly as is necessary. So, they're trying to protect what's left. It's, it's the state, the county, South Florida Water Management, and in our own area, South Broward. They all have licenses they have to live with, they have water requirements. If, if we decided to allow a subdivision to be put in here that was high density like they do in Fort Lauderdale now, you can't just drop that in and connect up to the city water like it used to be five and ten years ago. You've gotta go all the way to South Florida Water Management to get their approval, because they're now trying to plan at the macro level, plan for all of this. So, unfortunately for us, you know, we're, we're a lot different than most of the cities in Broward County. Most of the, the people that are still on septic tanks in Broward County are the old trailer parks. They don't permit trailer parks anymore. I lived near one that was over in Dania, and half of the septic tank systems were draining into the pond that was out back, because they weren't maintained properly. We don't see that in southwest ranches. We would know about it, because we have to have the water in our canals tested, and we also pay to have Griffin Road Canal tested by a testing agency. We're in good shape, but they don't care about that. We're little old southwest ranches, you know, eight thousand people, we're not a big deal. So, they're trying to put pressure on us to move along the way they want. I think we need to continue to fight it, but how long do we fight it? I mean, this is probably a fight that's gonna go on as long as, I look around the room, as long as we're walking the earth, because the water is definitely dwindling, and, and there's bigger and bigger concerns about it. I just think we oughta keep pushing as long as we can, because it isn't right. You know, they, they can't just come in and tell southwest ranches, you gotta spend five billion dollars, and I'm making up a number, to go out there and, you know, put pipes for water and septic in. We're not a small town. I mean, Fort Lauderdale spent seven hundred and fifty million dollars a couple of years ago to put new sewer lines in all the areas that were running septic tanks. Friends of mine, cost them eight grand to pull out their old septic tank and hook up on the city sewer system. That's in Fort Lauderdale where they're on little tiny lots. I mean, look at the size of our lots. I can't imagine it would cost me to run a pipe four hundred feet from my house out to the middle of the road. It would just be crazy expensive. So, I'll get off of that. I'll, I'll talk from time to time about what's going on there. But we're, we're fighting a battle that, that we need to, you know, stay in touch with and.
Bob, if I can interject just one second, I didn't know if Robert Lewin wanted to get up and say something out of the ordinary, but because it's your issue, I'm gonna let you get up.
No, I do appreciate you taking this seriously and getting right to it, but to Keith's point, Broward County, this has been on their books for thirty-five years, so it's on their agenda. We're talking, he's saying sixty, ninety, one hundred and twenty? They could table this.
No, no, they're gonna, they're on it, but.
They're on it, but.
They're on it, but unfortunately they're listening to us.
Right?
He, 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 he worked on Sunrise in the last three years.
But, but that's what I'm saying is, if you hook up with Sunrise Water, you guys don't even know about it, other than the permitting. Cooper City requires a handshake agreement with a piece of paper that's signed. Sunrise does not. So, you get permitted by southwest ranches, Sunrise should just get turned on. There's no signature that's required from Sunrise.
Rod, is that the case?
No, no, no.
You know, no, but the, the council have to sign.
Oh, we never sign on water permits to begin.
No, that's what Cooper City is asking for, is your signature.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about here. So.
That's different.
So, that's what I'm saying, it's, you, you're, you're. So, I, I appreciate you taking this seriously, but if I'm waiting on Broward County, I'm moving into my house in February, and from what you're telling me is not go jump in the lake, but go dig a well. Because I'm moving in February, and I've been working on this, like I said, with your town, hand in hand, getting the proper permits and everything else. And then at the eleventh hour, I'm being told this, but I do appreciate it. But if we're waiting for Broward County, when do you think this is gonna, it's not gonna be sixty, ninety, one hundred and twenty days?
They're, they're pushing it right now. I mean, the committee's been meeting for almost a year, is it?
I, I'm, I'm hoping and shooting for the thirteenth of February, but no guarantees, but that's what I'm trying for.
Taking it seriously, but if we're waiting for Broward County, my daughter's wedding, she's ten, I'm sure. Thank you.
Don't sell us short. We're on your side.
Alright, thanks. Bob, go ahead.
So, yeah, just the last thing I wanted to bring up, Noel, I'm glad you're keeping track. I guess Noel went outside of our bulk pickup. Is he really right that all they have to do is notify us that their truck is broken and they're off the hook for any damages?
No, it's not that simple. No.
Well, got nothing to do with the holiday. They missed us twice in a row. I mean, it was last bulk pick. We didn't get it today, so I'm assuming they're gonna be out tomorrow, okay? Last, last bulk pickup was what, two weeks ago? Again, they came on Friday. We're, I've argued this before, we're paying a premium for what should be very high-quality service. They factored in damages into their fee structure that they're charging us. I don't know why we're not going after them if we can, because the excuse for a garbage company that a truck is broken that they can't pick up, that's like, you know, you got a fleet of vehicles, you should have an extra one at least to, to account for. You should have spares, right? The airlines have a couple of extra airplanes, I'm sure. These guys picking up garbage, they'd have an extra bulk truck and a couple of extra garbage trucks just in case. So, we're not their only customer. So, we, we've gotta do something to motivate them to, to come out and do what they're, we're paying them to do. Alright.
Get on.
That's all, I, I believe that's all I have, Doug. Thanks.
Okay. Delsa, anything?
No.
No? Okay. Alright, Dee?
You don't wanna hear it.
Okay.
You don't wanna hear it.
Alright, so, I'm up, just a couple of things. Just got back from Tallahassee, went out Monday, had meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday morning. Very good meetings, things went well. Resident James Starkweather went with me, and we had a very good trip. So, we put in for four projects, I think, and I'm confident we'll get two, hopefully we'll get three, but anyhow. Who didn't I meet with? I met with the Speaker of the House, I met with Starkweather, I met with Jenny. I met, no, no, excuse me, Rick, Rick Stark, sorry. Rick Stark, Jenny, Lauren Book, lots, bunch of people. Those are all the main list of people, but we met with others that James knew and others knew, so we're hitting it from all sides. We even sat in on some committee things and whatnot, so it was interesting. So, we had a good trip. But that's it, so I'm done. Let's see, administrative, legal. Keith, you're up.
Yeah, before we get to me, is there any consensus on Lewin? Because, you know, we need some direction on how you all wish to proceed on that.
You're talking about the water, the hookup?
Yeah.
I'm one vote. I vote we wait to see how everything you're trying to do works, because if he wants, if they wanna put out letters to the neighbors, but I do see it could be a domino effect, and I, I, I don't know, I mean.
Well, let, let's give it till the commission meeting next Tuesday or whatever, and let's readdress it moving forward. But let's stay on it, and truthfully, under the circumstances, if we can get some approvals or whatever, if we need to call a special meeting just to get them done, I don't have a problem doing that.
No, but I, but I do think it's worth waiting. Keith is trying to do language, get language done. I don't, you know, and that's where I sit.
I don't mind calling Steve Geller's office tomorrow and seeing where they're at.
So, so let's talk next steps then, because if, if it is gonna be, let's say, well, we, we have a setback, it's gonna be another month. I mean, you can't live with a house without water.
Right.
And bottled water doesn't go that far. So, I, I like the idea of notifying the neighbors around it, because here, the domino effect is, as Delsa said, that worries me. I have no idea how many houses are between the resident and Cooper City. I mean, if this affects a hundred houses.
No, nothing close.
Do you have any idea? Three.
Well, I think both sides of the street, so maybe ten.
Well, hold, hold on, hold on. I don't know if that's something that Jeff can provide us in terms of who would be impacted by the pipe that's, that's there, so we can work with, you know, confirmed numbers from our town planner.
Yeah, but that would be just the first step, because then it's a quarter mile from them.
Yeah, and is it a quarter mile from a quarter mile from a quarter mile from a quarter mile?
We could be playing with fire here.
And that's what worries me. I mean, if, if, if it impacts a bunch of people, and everybody's on board to get Cooper City water, and Cooper City can provide it, I don't see an issue. On the other hand, if one side of the street doesn't want it and the other side of the street wants it, then I think we need to come up with Plan C here. So, I mean, I, but I'd want to continue to make progress. That's the point. Let's stay on it. Follow it.
Stay on it, just don't put the cart before the horse.
Right.
Let's wait, see how it plays out.
Can you have those, those numbers for us at the next meeting, Jeff?
Sure, and I just want to ask for clarification from the town attorney.
They're, they're looking for a quarter mile radius from the Lewin property, not including Cooper City, and not including that community adjacent to them that currently has Cooper City water.
What I'm, what I'm asking though is, the existing language only requires the quarter mile connection if it's a subdivision, for example. Wouldn't require an individual. Are they actually changing it?
They're changing it.
Okay.
That's the issue. They're changing, and the current language that they're changing it actually says that even if you are already built, you have to connect. So, which we were fighting to say new homes too. So, that is the change.
So, that doesn't just keep continuing, like you go a quarter mile, and then it's a quarter mile from them, and then another quarter mile.
The only thing I can tell you that's in the Lewin's favor here is that Cooper City does not have that much water left. And I know Marty probably knows that answer immediately.
Four hundred and twenty-four homes.
Okay, so, you know, there is a finite situation. I want to throw out something else that, that I threw out to Andy today as well to try to assist Lewin's in, in their connection. Rod has promised me that Cooper City has agreed to language, that in the event the Lewin's connect, that it will be prohibited from running any additional lines in the ranches without the consent of the council. Whether or not it will hold up legally, not a hundred percent sure, but it's a very nice handcuff to get both. So, that would mean that the Lewin's could notice the people within a quarter mile, that, you know, there may be an issue, want to make sure that no one has an issue, and at the same time have Cooper City sign a document saying that they will not connect to any further homes in the ranches without our consent. And by having both those, at least legally, you have a, a strong case to, to enable a connection. So, what I was trying to do is just come closer to get them some finality, because they've been dealing with this for a long time, and I feel bad when every time Mr. Kleiman calls me, because I'm like, you know, it's waiting. So, if I may, what, what I would suggest, up to the council's discretion, is to at least allow them to send out that notice, you know, work with Jeff's office, send out the notice, because then by the next meeting, you'll actually know whether or not anyone objects.
Right. Good.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
No, sounds like a good idea.
No, that, that, that sounds like a good idea.
Who's preparing the notice? You?
I'll work with their attorney on it.
Like, like, if I was average homeowner, how would I, yeah, how would I know what to do?
It will be certified mail, and I'll tell them to contact Russell, because he likes dealing with these issues.
That'll be in plain English.
Right?
Plain English.
Yes, absolutely. Alright, thank you. Other than that, I have no further legal comments.
Wow. Andy, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for a few things. First of all, I, I just want to say a thank you to, there's a quiet guy in the back of the room, Rudy Napolitano, who's at our every council meeting, hiding in the back, is retiring as the Assistant Fire Chief in Davie. So, Rudy, just wave. I won't make you come up and talk, just give a wave. Rudy's retiring after thirty years, and I can tell you I'm gonna miss him. He's just really one of the nicest guys I've ever worked with in this business. He's been absolute pleasure, and I wish him the best in retirement, and I'm gonna miss him. His replacement, Alan Saldahl, is back there. He'll be stepping up as Assistant Chief, and he'll be responsible. So, that'll be the new quiet face you'll see in the back of the room as, as we go forward. So, welcome, Alan. The second thing is, I wanted to give you all an update on the fire assessment study. As you know, we put that out to bid. That closed last week. The selection review committee met yesterday. We had two proposals that we received. I'll just say that I thought one was clearly better than the other. So, we did rank them, and so we're in the process of preparing that item to bring before you at the first meeting in February, so that we can hold tight to that schedule, so that we can get that in place. The contractor or the vendor that we selected did lay out a timeline that allows us to get this completed this year. And so, once that contract is in place, obviously, the council will have the opportunity to meet with, with the vendor. We'll settle, set up a, a meeting for the Fire Assessment Advisory Board to meet with the consultant as well, so that we, we stay on track and moving forward. So, I'm, I'm pleased to report that we're on track there. Third item I wanted to touch base, and some of you may have noticed it, some of you may have not, but over by the other, the, the main front door to Town Hall, there's a new bench that's been added, a tribute to former council member Freddie Fisickelli. We've also installed a plaque out at Country Estates Park for him. I think you all had seen it in my office prior to that being installed. So, it references Country Estates Park and the fishing hole, as Freddie used to call it, Fishing Hall Park. So, that, that's been installed out there. So, that park that was, was very important to him will have his presence going forward. So, I wanted to share that with you. And last but not least, I want to let you know we have, we're gonna have to have a couple of changes to our meeting schedule this year due to budget issues. As you know, when we have our, our public hearings on budgets, we cannot conflict with the county, with the school board, with other agencies. So, our regular meeting on July twenty-third, which will be the second meeting in July, we're gonna need to reschedule. we're going to need to reschedule that one to July 30th. We're going to need to move it to the last Thursday of the month so that we're not in conflict with the school board. And the first meeting, the first meeting in September, which was scheduled for 9:10, September 10th, we're proposing to move that to Monday, 9:14 because we're in conflict, I believe, with the county on that one. So, I'd like to get a motion from, and a second from the council, to move the July 23rd meeting to July 30th and the September 10th meeting to September 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Call the question.
Councilmember Adamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Andy, what else?
Thank you, Mayor, and that completes my report for now.
Used to be on your birthday, right, Steve? Now it's on mine.
All right.
Item nine.
Number nine, Russell.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the Town of Southwest Ranches Rural Identification Program Manual for all new identification signs placed on town property, including but not limited to the town's right-of-way, requiring all identification signage located on town property to obtain town approval prior to installation, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Prior to you opening this to the public comment?
Go ahead.
Or is the first part of public comment, I'd ask the chair to indulge Joan Boyd, the Chair of the Rural Public Arts Advisory Board?
Gladly.
And Mayor, just for the record, because it was brought up aptly by Emily and town staff, this does not in any way, shape, or form was intended to include, just for the record, DOT required signage like street signs.
Right.
So, this is only for identification signage.
Okay.
Regardless, I'm Joan Boyd, I'm the chairperson of the Rural Public Arts.
Is your mic on? I can barely hear you.
Yep, he's on.
Am I not talking out enough?
Thank you.
Should I, okay, do I need to repeat who I am? Okay. I just want to really express my appreciation because this has been a long time coming. We've worked really hard for all these years, well, since the inception of the board, which is the oldest board in the town. Doug McKay was our council liaison and he worked really hard with us to put our book together with the designs and all of the standards. And then when he became mayor, Dee came in and I appreciate all of your work too. Bob Hartman, I appreciate you going forward and taking this for us to council and getting this passed through so that we can work. And then Keith, I really appreciate whatever you can do to pass this on through for us because we've worked really, really hard, a lot of people have put a lot of hours in. Susan has been excellent to work with, she's our rock star over there, she deserves a lot of credit. She works really, really hard. And last but not least, like the postal service, I guess, through rain, sleet, snow, and hail, and mosquitoes, tsunamis, whatever comes along, Gary is always at our meetings, he's there every time and has been very, very helpful in keeping us on, you know, in line and everything going forward. And I really, really appreciate that. And I want to mention, we have a new member on our board tonight, Judy Parker. And she's, she will be starting with us as of tonight, as a new board member. So, I'll introduce her. But I just really want to express my appreciation and I thank you, Keith.
We're just really happy that it finally made it out here and that it's up for vote and that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, in the mic.
I said, we're just very happy that all the work that the board has put in has finally made it up to the council and that the council has the opportunity to hear us out and vote on the issue. So, just happy to be here and appreciate everyone's efforts to get this out here and hopefully it goes well.
Awesome. Any additional public comment on this matter?
Was there a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just got my eyes checked today at the driver's license thing. I don't require glasses. However, the other night, I'm coming from Publix to 185th Avenue, about eight o'clock at night, of course, it's dark. I couldn't find the damn intersection. I had a look and look and look and I, I'm telling you, you need to have a reflective sign. I don't care what you do with it, but get the value of the reflectiveness of the sign. It's an easy thing to do and it's going to be, contribute to everybody's safety, including mine. You wouldn't want to lose me, would you?
No.
Okay.
Of course not.
Newell Hollingsworth, 198th Avenue. There's a couple of things. One, the manual is not part of the documentation in the thing. So, no one has any idea to take a look at it to see how to react to it from the public. So, before the next reading, I'd like to see that put out on the website for the next meeting. And the second thing is that it's been the standard of the council that when a manual is put together, that you put in the ordinance, that it can be amended by resolution and not by ordinance, which is two readings. So, the manual, if you decide to pass it, it should be by, changed by resolution, the manual itself. But as far as the backup, the manual should be in the, there, so everyone can take a look at it to see if we see something that's an unintended consequence or something that is egregious or everyone agrees with it. So, let's get it for the next reading, okay? Thank you very much.
David Kazinsky, 6411 Holiday Trail. Like Newell, I had this highlighted as well, where I see the whereas clause, Rural Identification Program Manual. I couldn't find it anywhere online, so I had no point of reference to see what was referenced and didn't know where it was. Excuse me. Another question I have, everybody saw, has seen Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association signs. I imagine that this would impact any future changes to those signs?
Yep.
And so, I'm foreseeing sometime down the road, somebody else's president, I found something else to do with my time, and they, signs deteriorate, need to be replaced. Now, this looks like they're going to require those changes to go through the Rural Arts Board. Now, if the Rural Arts Board says, okay, Sunshine Ranches, you want to replace this sign and we'll say the sign replacement is 50 bucks, something like that. But the Rural Arts Board says, well, we want you to make this change, it's going to cost additional funds. Is that going to be a passed-on burden to Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association? Because, I mean, that sounds like an unfunded mandate that we get from the federal government, that the state passes down to the town, and now the town passing down to the HOAs.
I'll have a chat with Ryan Case.
All right, thanks.
Is that it?
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed, back to us. Any additional discussion? Seeing none?
Is there someplace that you can put, I mean, it makes complete sense that
We can certainly add it.
The design standards should be online.
We can certainly add it to the back of the ordinance, it wasn't referred to in the ordinance, we'll certainly include it.
I don't mean just in the ordinance. What I'm suggesting is somewhere where you've got all of our archives, a copy of this is online as well.
When this gets approved as an ordinance, it'll be part of our code of ordinances and it'll be available online.
Perfect.
Councilmember Hartman, if I may, this is what I'd like to do because I, I, this was probably drafted 14 years ago, maybe more at this point. So, I didn't think there was anyone here who's been a longtime rancher who didn't know of this document because it's been around so long. And that's why in this, I refer to it as, you know, the Town's Rural Identification Program Manual. We use this for every grant, you know, that I can even remember, you know, dating all those years ago. So, what I would do is, after an A where it says program manual, I would just write, attach here too as exhibit A. We'll attach that language, that document directly to the ordinance so that when you pull up the ordinance, the sign manual will already be attached. So, if the maker of the motion could just make that amendment. As to Newell's secondary comment about modified by resolution, I didn't think you all wanted to do that, but you're more than welcome to do that because then it also becomes pretty easy to change and I know that was not the intent of the council. The last point that David Kazinsky made, I want to just clarify, yes, it's correct. You do not have to go before the Rural Identification Board if you're replacing your signs, but you do have to conform with the requirements of the manual. And so, the manual says what the sign has to look like. It's not a negotiation, it's very specific because they're trying to create a uniform standard for the town. So, all future signs, HOA or otherwise, replacement, new, anything, have to conform with the standards. And it's also clear in here, and I just want to make it clear, that if someone puts up a sign that was not approved by the town, you know, around the town at all, that sign can be removed and replaced with a sign that matches the Rural Identification Standard.
I want to say a couple of things. I think Joan, Ken Semenow would be very proud, very happy, and very excited that this is going to come to fruition. If a HOA had deterioration of a sign or it got wrecked or knocked down and chose not to put up one, would he or she be allowed to do that? They don't have to. So, if you didn't have the monies in your HOA or anything to replace the sign, then you could opt not to put one up, I guess, is the way you would go. Otherwise, you'd have to replace it with whatever is in the manual, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Do you want to modify your motion to attach the exhibit? You made the motion.
Yes, I do, I want to modify it to.
All right, I'll second it.
All right, call the question.
Councilmember Adamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, so the item passes on first reading, second reading will be on February 13th.
Okay, number 10, Andy, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, at the December meeting, there was a first reading scheduled for proposed changes to the nursery ordinance. A great, great number of the public came out, had some concerns, raised various issues with it. That item was withdrawn at that time. The council then tasked me with going through that, meeting with you all individually, and working to try to build some consensus as best I could. So, what I did was, following that meeting, I worked in conjunction with Emily and in the interest of transparency, tried to simplify down as best we could the components of that ordinance. And I gave that to you all at the last meeting and copies of that were given to the public. Since that meeting, I have now met with all of you and I have a further document that's been shared with you and I know Emily has got some that she's sharing with the public as well, which reflects the consensus of the meetings I had with you all individually. So, I met with you all individually, you were all seeing the consensus for the first time. None of you know where your colleagues were on this. I had to wait until a publicly noted meeting to share it with you, which is what we've done. So, you haven't had, this was not part of your backup because you could not see it until this meeting. Tonight, I just want to kind of go through that as best we can and get some guidance from you. There were some things that were very clear that you were all in agreement on, whether to leave in, whether to take out, and we'll kind of take a quick walk through that. There's probably three or four items that maybe you want to have some discussion on publicly, where some of you voiced some questions or concerns, and I want to give you the opportunity to do that. Based on the consensus tonight, you can schedule this for further discussion. You can scuttle the whole thing, you can ask us to draft a revised ordinance based on tonight's input and bring it back. This is really a discussion for the council, although I wanted to certainly share the information with the public. Any ordinance that may or may not come out of this, obviously, would be advertised, would be scheduled to public hearings, I mean, there's a process that we need to go through, but I certainly want the public to have their opportunity to share their thoughts with you as well. So, if I may, just jump into it now, section two of that ordinance created definitions. There's no real legislation within the definitions, it just created those categories and generally recognized definitions and all five of you were in agreement with those definitions. You didn't take exception to that. And so, I'm really just going to move past that at this point, if I may. In section three, the language, and I'll read this, this section classifies home occupations, farms, and non-commercial farms accessory to a residence as not residential uses and requires their certificate of use. And I got a mixed response from all of you, whether or not we needed to have a certificate of use requirement, whether this, this language should stay in or be removed. So, I'm looking for a little bit further discussion from the council or some input. And if you want to just take time to consider it and not make that decision now, that's all right as well. So, I really, I looked, I want to kind of walk you through this, but I'm going to turn to the council to give me some input on that, if you could.
So, you want feedback?
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Correct, on 3A.
Yeah, on 3A, I'd really like to digest this more.
Okay.
Just an initial comment on that section. Basically, if I'm reading this right, if my wife grows a pineapple plant or a tomato plant out on the porch, I'm now a farm and I need a certificate of use. It's non-commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I don't see this as, I don't agree with this, you know, at requiring a certificate of use, but that's first blush.
I'm with you, I don't think a certificate of use is required either.
Yeah.
So, let's talk about what the original intent was of this exercise that goes back. I think our intent was to try to regulate retail nurseries, not equestrian operations, not non-commercial farms, not farms by the state's definitions. It was retail landscape nurseries so that we would be able to stop some of the egregious problems that have happened in some of the neighborhoods. So, how controls on all these other types of agricultural businesses got in here, I'm not sure. What's missing is the obvious one of, do we want to require a certificate of use for a retail landscape nursery that we want to understand what they're doing and be able to have some control over them? So, in my mind, none of this belongs, just the phrase retail, retail nursery. I don't know, what do you guys think about that?
Well, retail nursery is not in there now.
Nope.
Right. But that's, to me, the only category that belongs in there.
I know, I hear you. Well, do we require a certificate of use currently for a retail nursery, Andy?
Yes.
Okay. So, we already have that on the books.
So, are we required of all of these then, Andy?
Certificates of use would be required, yes.
No, no, not would be. Is it currently required for home occupations, farms, non-commercial farms?
I don't believe so. Okay. Andy?
It's required, but it's not always complied with, in many cases, we're not aware.
Okay. Well, I think all this language, I think we should take that out. I mean, like, and I'm using the tomato plant on the patio.
I agree.
Right.
Okay.
As a, you know, it's a food product.
Well, let me remind you all of the obvious, which I know you, but I share this for the public as well. For any item to be considered to move forward requires the consent of all five of you. So, any issues raised, that item is removed. So, based on, I've already heard two objections, I'm just, I'm drawing a line through 3A.
So, we don't want to control non, excuse me, we don't want to control then retail landscape nurseries? That's what that implies?
What?
Okay.
An implication is not, it's just implied, it isn't there.
Well, I'm saying take this
I agree with you.
Wordage out.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to add back retail nurseries, but I thought we already had that covered.
No, I think it's already gone, A is gone, right? Right?
Well, I think the question was, we want to require retail nurseries to have a certificate of use. That requirement already exists within our code.
There you go.
Okay, good enough. So, we didn't have a definition of a retail nursery in the past, that's why I'm asking.
So, we're omitting Section A?
Section 3A is.
3A.
Section B, regarding cottage food operations, cottage food operations, you all said, strike that. You see, it struck through, that's already gone. Item C, generally, you guys were all okay with it, but from a legal or planning standpoint, I guess I want to get an interpretation.
No conversion of a residential.
It states that no residential building, or any part thereof, may be converted to a non-residential use, and there was a question about that, a simple home office.
Home office is a residential use.
Okay, so that would be considered residential use, so it would not apply.
It's a home office.
So, if I put a law office in the back of my house, and I used it for myself, I'd be exempt?
You're exempt.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
You just can't have seven cars drive up every hour on the hour.
Then that's not a home office.
Yeah, that's different, good.
Okay, so C is okay?
C is okay, yes, that stays in.
Yeah, the intent here was to stop wholesale conversion of homes into display area, et cetera, okay, good.
Okay, moving on to Section 4, C3, requires the following. Parking and storage of agricultural vehicles and equipment must be registered to the owner or lessor of the plot, except for equestrian boarding. And I think, for the most part, you were all comfortable with that, but I think there was one question, that might there be a better way to word that? I don't remember exactly what the concern was. So, I just wanted to run that by you all as well.
I don't know.
Well, everything has.
You weren't the question.
You can't have two horses on your property and have 40 vehicles parked in the back, you know?
This would not apply to equestrian boarding.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, horse trailers, that sort of thing. Right.
Right. Okay, so we're okay with that, okay?
Okay.
The next one, which was probably the most controversial in the December meeting, was the horse trailers, and you guys, five for five, get rid of that, that's, you know, that's gone.
Yep.
Never to return.
Okay. Good.
Item C was prohibiting the parking and storage of vehicles or equipment on a farm that are not used predominantly on the farm. And I felt like the majority of you said, get rid of this, just based on our residents and equipment that they own.
I don't think it fits.
It doesn't.
Okay, let's two, I'm drawing a line through that, okay?
So, we're omitting C?
We're omitting C. Moving on to Section J2, allows nurseries to sell materials incidental to the installation, maintenance, and use of plant products. By way of example, the following are classified as incidental materials. Stepping stones, river rocks, railroad ties, ponds, mulch, topsoil, fertilizer, and tree bracing kits. By way of example, the following are not incidental materials. Lawn furniture, including benches and picnic tables, gazebos, decorative fountains, statues, recreational playground equipment, pools and hot tubs, household goods, and rugs. And generally, you were okay with that. I think there was a question of, should we prohibit motorized equipment and trailers, like, you know, lawn mowers and tractors? And could we consider decorative fountains and gazebos as incidental to those nurseries? So, that's a policy consideration for all of you.
I think the motorized equipment is, I see that as a can of worms being opened up and going all over the place, because now you've got fuel, you've got foil, lubricants.
So, you're saying specifically banned?
Who knows where that's going to go?
Okay, banned motorized vehicles?
Yeah. The sale of, what we're talking about.
Okay, right. Would it be acceptable to move decorative fountains and gazebos, I'll put them both together, to incidental? Or would you see that as non-incidental materials?
I would, I'm not in favor of including that.
I'm not in favor of gazebos, and portico chaise, and whatever, that, to me, is not landscaping.
Okay, how about a small fountain?
Small fountains, like when you're doing your nursery.
Does everybody remember the large horse fountains?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Which somebody said, wow, those are small horses.
I liked it.
You know, so, I guess it's all kind of relative.
I'm just saying, it's in the eye of the beholder, but if you're going to go to a plant nursery, and you want to have plants and stuff like that, I mean, it's just, to me, if I'm, I want my nursery to be what I want my nursery to be, I guess I could go somewhere else and buy the product, but if it's here in my town, why wouldn't I spend the money here?
Yeah, but now you're turning into, what did you say, Bob?
Garden center.
A garden center, a Home Depot, Lowe's.
But there are little nurseries around here.
And that's just across the road, so, you know, if you want it, you can go across the road.
Really? I can also say no, and it's not going anywhere.
You can do that, absolutely.
And I do.
There you go.
So, we're not including decorative fountains, is that?
That would be the no.
That would be a no, okay. Section J.
Not, but by way it is.
Do we want to require incidental landscape materials to be screened from view?
One more time?
Incidental.
Incidental landscape materials, should they be required to be screened from view?
No.
I just want to add something to that, Mayor. Just to let you know, that's existing language, it was underlined in the ordinance, only because it was moved from another place. The genesis of that language was the first go-around with nurseries in 2005-ish, 2006, when the council at that time was grappling with the fountains, and the benches, and the statues issue. They were kind of lining Griffin Road, and they didn't want to see them. And in trying to put a limitation on the quantity of those things.
Well, we just eliminate them altogether, so, why do we need this?
Well, for any of the stuff, whether it's mulch bags or anything, that was the point, was, that's why it was there. We don't care how much of it you sell, just we don't, we don't want to see it from the right of way, just so you know where it came from.
So, it's currently required not to be screened?
Right.
Yeah, I'd take it off.
Okay, so let's leave that alone.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Adamson wanted to, was asking me again about the small fountains, and I just, I know we talked about the gazebos, I just want to make sure. It sounded like the small fountains, you did not want to move it to incidental? You wanted to leave it as not, non-incidental, is that? Or are you okay moving that to an incidental?
I like being able to have a small fountain be sold at a nursery if I want to sell a small fountain. I'm not talking about, you know?
A 10-foot fountain.
The Leaning Tower of Pisa, or something, I'm just talking about small fountains that go in our gardens when we want to make.
Yeah, but now you're specifying what you want, and when he's got 60, or she, he or she's got 60 of them out front, because they're only small. Because they're only small.
Yeah.
So, they can display cool.
You know, Meca had an old saying, out of sight, out of mind, so, maybe screening it is not a bad idea, you know? Covering it up, so no one sees it, and.
Well, maybe it'll go where the orchids are, because they're always undercover, because they don't like sun.
You're really going to create all this regulation?
I mean, it's a fountain, for God's sake, we've had nurseries in this town forever. Maybe it's just the little fountain that makes the little nursery look cool, maybe it's not even for sale.
Well, if it's not for sale, that wouldn't be discussed here, this is only things for sale. If they had incorporated fountains with their, you know, their design of the facility, that's different.
To clarify, they're not currently allowed to sell fountains. So, if you wanted to add it, it would be giving them something that they're not allowed to do today. Today, they're not allowed to sell fountains.
So, all right, so there aren't any nurseries within the town that are currently selling?
No, I'm sure there is, they're just not allowed to.
That's not what he said, he said they're not allowed.
I want to know, because maybe there are nurseries that have been in this town for 45 years, and maybe those people have sold fountains for 45 years, and maybe nobody in this town has ever seen one of those fountains. So, I think if you want to make it prospective, then do it, otherwise grandfather it in. Because you're going to make people, maybe they have 25 small fountains, you know, with the little bird here, and the little round thing, and you're going to make them all, take them where? Throw them away?
Home Depot.
Get out of here.
It's never been allowed.
Lowe's is like.
Okay, recognizing it takes all five of you to make that change?
Yeah, well, it's not really a change, because it's never been allowed.
Right, well, it would be a change to allow it, yes.
Are you fining, are we fining nurseries? Are we going to go out and look for nurseries in this town?
So, what you're saying is to, it currently stands, right now, they're not allowed. So, what you're saying is you want them allowed?
I want not to uproot people who've been doing this forever. I mean, if they're not allowed now, if we've been fining these people for the last 45 years?
No, no.
No, but I'll tell you, we don't have the manpower to go get them either, even if they're selling them.
You never know, there are people in this town that drive around just to look.
So, you're saying you want to amend this and make a motion that we allow them?
To grandfather in whatever might be here now.
So, we have to vote on that?
Let's not say whatever, right?
Well, I don't.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight, what I'm trying to do is continue to build consensus, so that we can ultimately bring something back to.
Yeah, but it's, it's never been, it's never been legal, so, you can't really grandfather in any illegal activity, you know, so.
Okay, so it's been illegal, so I'm sure we've got people all over that have been paying lots and lots of fines, right?
No.
No, not at all, that, we don't, you know, it's not something that we're running around and trying to enforce, but you got to be careful with what you're agreeing to, you might get what you want.
Right. Okay, we'll discuss it.
We, Gary had addressed, can we prohibit motorized vehicles, and it says here, and trailers. Where do we stand on trailers, is that an ancillary use for a landscape nursery? If it is, are we talking about the kind you haul around a mower on? Or is this the ones that they, that the landscape companies use, that are converted to horse trailers? What are we saying here? I mean, to me, a trailer is not an ancillary use for a landscape nursery.
No, well, we're talking about the sale, not the use.
Understood, but that's my point. If they're selling orchids and landscape material, are they going to also be selling trailers as an ancillary, sellable material?
I don't see that as a nursery item.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because we just.
Yeah, I would say prohibit it.
Okay.
Along with a motorized vehicle.
Right.
What's a motorized vehicle? I'm not sure what the motorized vehicle part is coming from.
When I talk to Andy about it, are we going to allow them to sell lawn mowers, and skags, and John Deere's?
Okay, I've got a question, if it's a nursery, it's considered ag.
Right.
Do we have a right to say?
Yes.
We don't have a right to say, well, you can't have that.
You do, you do.
Yeah, you can, I mean, this is.
It's a retail operation, that's not an ag use.
Why can't you open a Walmart, then, on the back corner of a farm? You can, I mean.
They're selling plants at the nursery, and.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify, Del, so you're right, plants, all these other things are not plants.
Have we seen a nursery in this town that's selling trailers and four-wheelers?
No. There are some that are selling trailers, yes, but nobody's selling lawn mowers or motorized stuff. But trailers, and they've been
Right.
highly helpful and useful in a lot of ways. And I got to tell you, I don't have any issue with the trailers myself.
No, because they're flat, and you put the plants on them, and you drive them to wherever you're going.
Not with the fountain and the bird, though.
Yes, yes, yes.
Trailers, no.
See, the plants go around the.
I see trailers, yes, but that's. All right, well, you say yes, I say no, so.
Yeah, I don't agree with the trailer thing, I could just really easily see that getting out of hand.
Yeah.
Big time.
Good, okay. Back to you, Andy, I think.
Okay, I think Section J3, which was encouraging the architectural style, you all said to remove that, so, we did. And Section K, highlights a distinction that allows all plant nurseries on major roads, and limited-size wholesale nurseries on local roads. This section allows for nurseries to be potentially in any location by special exception, the details are outlined below. Section K, that opening paragraph, you were fine with. K1 establishes the land with legal access to one of these roads. Griffin Road, Sheridan Street, Flamingo Road, Volunteer Road, Dykes Road, Southwest 172nd Ave, US 27. You were all okay with those locations. There was a question about grandfathering, but that's addressed a little bit further on. One council member did have a concern on residential properties abutting the proposed site. And that, Jeff, I may ask you, if you could weigh in on what buffering requirements might be necessary for something like that?
Are we talking about, we're talking about a retail nursery that's permitted on one of the major roads?
Yeah.
Right now, there's no buffering, that I can think of, that's required in here. I don't think we've addressed that specifically. For those with, for anything requiring a special exception, we started getting into those kind of details, but not for a nursery by right.
That can open on a main road, there are no requirements for that, okay. In Section K2, it talks about additional roads, not the roads on the list that I just read, but it limits that nursery operation to wholesale, no retail sales, which would, the thought is to lessen the traffic that that would bring into a neighborhood, and that the land should not exceed 2.5 net acres. If there is a house on the land, the nursery can occupy more than 50% of the land. If there isn't a house, the nursery can occupy the entire property, and it does allow for a special exception permit, and you are all, across the board, we're okay with that language.
Yeah.
Section K3, existing nurseries that do not comply with this ordinance become non-conforming uses that can operate until the use is changed, or the use is discontinued for six consecutive months. There was a question about grandfathering, or changing that from six months to a year, because there are concerns with that language. But I will say that, as long as the use is consistent, it allows for the property to be sold. They would only become non-conforming if the use is discontinued, and they do have the option to come back before you, in Item B, for a special exception permit to be reinstated, should you choose to do that. So, I think you were all okay with Section K2 and K3. Section K4 deals with conditions that you, as a council, would look at in the event that you're asked to consider a special exception. And I won't read the whole list, but there's a lot of different things there, including the buffering and screening from adjacent residential. You were all okay with this, and there was a question about commercial waste collection, and should it be required? And the answer to that is, if they're a commercial operation, yes, they would be required to have a dumpster and commercial waste collection. If not, would they need a slab for their bulk collection? But they would not participate in town bulk, so that the slab would not be a requirement.
Andy, before you move forward, you kind of, you mentioned the six months to a year.
Oh.
Should we be considering that, it says six months in the language?
Yeah.
You know, what I was thinking there, guys, is somebody has a, you know, an ongoing operation, whether it's, you know, a landscape nursery that's retail or wholesale, and somebody has a heart attack, a stroke, or what have you, and, you know, they don't have any kids that want to take it over, and it's going to take them some time to get rid of it. Six months to get rid of an ongoing concern can be sometimes pretty tough, if you're laid up. So, I was thinking, maybe we, you know, give people an opportunity of a year to maintain things the way they are, because if we go six months, we can be reducing the value of the property pretty significantly, if, you know, if something happens that slows the person down.
But wouldn't that six-month trigger at a point of sale? In other words, if you're an existing nursery, you're the owner, you have a heart attack, you're out of commission, whatever it is.
Right.
Death in the family, you move away, whatever, it's still considered a nursery until you try to sell it. And then, at six months, at the point of selling it, that would be the beginning of the six-month period.
I think that's the way we discussed it at the Comp Plan Board multiple times.
Is that what it is, Keith?
Is, I'm not clear that.
Six months from the sale?
Yeah.
Jeff, what's that answer?
Yeah.
Since we're talking about, since we're talking about, in the case of a retail nursery,
Right.
if the retail operation were to cease for six months, regardless of sale, that would trigger it.
Right, so, if, you know.
What would trigger that, exactly?
How would it?
How would you know?
Got to go on there and buy a plant, and you could sell the plant to yourself, practically. I mean, I see enforcement of that.
It's a way to keep the ball rolling.
Well, that's what I'm, well, keeping the ball rolling, but.
Yeah, but there, you know, you can't, you can't live everything on a what-if, you know? You just can't.
You know, I'd love to see an exception here, where you give people a little more time.
But that would be where maybe the applicant could come forward, and speak to us for a special exemption, and say, listen, you know, this is what I suffered.
Why don't we allow another, a six-month extension by the town administrator?
An extension, okay.
If it's needed.
Yeah, special exception is, to me, a bit more owner.
Yeah, we can make it.
Yeah, an extension, granted by, a one-time extension. Yeah, an extension granted by, a one-time extension granted by the town administrator.
Yeah, why don't we do it that way?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Delso, you okay with that?
Okay, good.
Okay.
As I get more white in my beard, I think that way more.
Okay. Where are we at?
Okay, jumping back to the next page, I was talking about the slabs, the commercial collection. And it was just a question about guardrails or other safety enhancements if needed. And obviously, that's something we want to factor in if you're granting a special exception and there's something specific to that site that's a problem, I want to give you guys the ability to address that. Section X prohibits single-family homes from being converted for any non-residential purpose other than a permitted home occupation. And we've struck through unless a special exception use permit is approved by the town council. Because I think the goal of this was to discourage people from buying houses and converting it over, similar to what happened next door to Town Hall.
Absolutely, yep.
Yep, we're all on board on that.
Okay. All right, the next one, Section 045-050.
Can I just ask about a potential, and this doesn't affect me obviously, but I know a lot of houses in town are used for movie sets, backdrops, that sort of thing. Not a residential use. Are we inadvertently with our nursery ordinance prohibiting that type of activity?
No.
No.
No, we work closely with the Convention of Visitors Bureau.
Right.
Which encompasses all film efforts in Broward County. And so that's something that the county has encouraged. We work, as I said, we work through the Convention of Visitors Bureau, we get film permits, we work to expedite those. Yeah, yeah.
We've been doing it for years.
Yeah, this would not preclude that.
Okay, that's the key question. Thank you.
Right. Okay, Section 045-050, this section clarifies that landscape maintenance businesses are prohibited in rural and agricultural zoning districts. It prohibits any business activity, parking or storage relating to maintenance of off-site lawns and landscaping except as provided in Section 045-030 C4A. That is currently prohibited in our code. But, you know, talking to Keith, I know that that's something that's not perhaps as clear as we would like it to be. And the goal here was to try to clarify that. I got, I'll say mixed response from council, whether this should be included here or not. And based on that, I certainly throw it to the council.
I want to make this clear, the code currently prohibits this, okay? The problem that we have, our realtors are not finding this easily in the code. So when they're showing people property or marketing them properties, they're selling it to them for use for the storage of their landscape equipment. And then they later find out that it's not allowed. So when they were going through the rewrite, Jeff said I called him, I believe, and I said, you know, at this point, can you clarify this provision because it's creating issues where people are not finding it in the code, so they're buying properties thinking that this is allowed? So all this does is places that language clearer in a different portion of the code. It's currently not allowed today.
So you're not changing intent?
Not changing anything.
You're just clarifying.
Clarifying and putting it in a different section so it can be easily found.
Okay.
Going to be, going to be interesting.
Well, I'm okay with it if it's already not permitted. I mean.
You guys know how many are in town that do it now and have for years?
Probably over a hundred and fifty, and that's just on my block.
Okay, all right. I just want you guys well aware of it. Now, some have ag and some of them don't.
Has anyone been cited?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know, you say, oh, yeah. One person, two people?
Commissioner, just to clarify, our town code enforcement is set up as not being proactive. So it's only reactionary. So the only way we would cite someone for any illegal use in the entire code of ordinances is if a neighbor or someone complained about them and we went and investigated. So everyone that we've been contacted about, we have cited. And there have been several that have come before code enforcement. I can only imagine that there's hundreds more, okay? But we don't proactively go out and find them unless the council asks us to.
Julio would know. Julio, in the last, in the, just in the last year.
The Hatfield and McCoy's.
How, how many of these violations have you sat in on?
That's been a lot. Sat in on, just.
Could you specify what violations?
Landscape equipment.
The illegal parking of landscaping.
In the last year? About twenty-five, thirty?
Okay.
Let me ask you a different question. How many of those were on properties that they didn't own? In other words, the landscape businesses were on somebody else's real estate, they were leasing the land and it wasn't the owners and their business?
I would say a large portion, probably more than half.
Okay, so I would tell you in that scenario, if it's not the owner and their real estate and their property or their business, you know, that's a no-brainer to me. But if it's the owners and it's their business and they've been doing it a long time kind of thing, it's a little more of a sticky wicket if they're addressed that their property and all, anyhow, that's kind of what my view.
That is where I'm coming from.
Now, if they're leasing it, it's not their property, I don't have an issue with that at all.
So here's why I think we definitely have to do something about making it clearer, whether it's in red letters or boldface. Because we got a phone call probably two months ago from somebody out on 210. He was very upset about one resident, well, not, well, not a resident. I don't want to go into names, but one lot that is more or less being converted from their old business which stored a lot of heavy equipment and pipes and all sorts of things there into just, almost looks abandoned. So they were upset about that. Then next door to them, there is a full-blown landscape maintenance company moving in and, you know, developing the property. Yeah, exactly. West side of the street.
Yeah.
West side of Sterling and 210. So they're really upset because, you know, how could the town let this happen? Well, we generally don't find out until people complain. If it was unclear to these folks that the entire business they built there is illegal in our town, then either they didn't use an attorney, but it doesn't seem that way. I haven't talked to them. But they're building a nice facility. I would be upset if I were the neighbor next door as well. Or, to Keith's point, it isn't clear in our code. If it would have been clear, they probably wouldn't have taken the risk to operate as an illegal enterprise. So in my mind, I agree with you, Keith. Somehow, this needs to be clarified so people understand, no. So.
You know, I got to tell you, my first impression and my thought process here is you go after the ones that don't own it, that are leasing or renting or using somebody else's property to run that business, so to speak, okay? So I think by just going after that group and that category to start with, that it'll make a huge difference.
But not being proactive, you got to get the phone calls. You got to have somebody complain about it. And the only time the complaints really come in, I feel, is when, you know, if my neighbor is doing something, is really bugging me and he doesn't want to listen to me, I'm going to go and rat him out. And then he's going to rat out this one and this one because they're doing it.
All the landscape companies are going to roll on each other, without a doubt.
They will.
They absolutely do and will, without a doubt.
Yep.
Julio knows, he gets it all the time, I'm sure in that regard.
Yeah, but this is, this is something that's already in the code.
Yeah.
Right.
I get it.
We're stating an existing rule and law right here. We're not, we're not changing anything.
No, we're not.
Nope.
We're not adding anything, we're not subtracting anything. This is already there.
Okay, so let me ask you a different question. Do you all want to turn loose code enforcement to make this proactive?
I think that's a separate discussion.
I do too.
Well, I mean, I mean, why are we going to sit here and talk about it and it's a big issue and they're selling it and things are happening?
I mean, how is it separate? I mean, there are people in this town that may fall into this illegal category, but they've been doing it their entire life here.
Yeah, but you know, the old saying is, it doesn't mean it's right.
Yeah, but if it's an illegal activity, it's an illegal activity. There's no getting around that.
I mean, if our intention.
Grandfather them in and make it for anybody coming forward.
People know what they're getting themselves into.
I don't.
I don't want to turn this into a proactive item, I mean.
I don't think I would either. I think I'd leave things like they are. If the calls come in and the complaints, you have no choice but to address them and you just go from there.
I think we need to address it on a case-by-case basis as, as the calls come in or if, you know, not.
By the way, to make you clear, this code provision is from 1968. This is an inherited provision from Broward County.
Oh.
Naturally, it's how they made money.
Show me the money. Like you said, we are not proactive and.
Do you have any more questions of Julio's? Or are we going to let him sit down?
No, I want him to stand there.
Goes with the new job.
And the time.
Thank you, Julio.
Thank you, Julio.
Okay, so now I understand perfectly. This is either in or it's out.
Well, you got, yes.
It, we're not changing anything by leaving it in, we're not changing anything by taking it out.
We're trying to clarify an existing code, but it sounds like council's resistant to incorporating this language. Is that?
I'm okay with it in.
Well, it is. I mean.
There's two in, one out, okay?
The point that Keith is making is that it's deceptive for people to buy property with the intention of building a landscape nursery.
Well, it's been suggested in the past. And it was given to Robert at one time to make up a list, a criteria of the top ten rules. And make sure that the realtors, I don't want this, what do I want that for? Make sure that the realtors, because they sell the properties to these people,
Right.
have it and say, oh, by the way, here's your list. These are our top ten really boogie ones that we want you.
As a realtor. I take exception. No, I had a realtor sell property to the east of us and told the people they were selling the property to that, oh, you can just put a gate right there. And we went, uh, no. And the person went to the town and found out, no, you can't have it. That's Delso and Les' property. So there are ways, realtors can make mistakes because I deal with them every day. They get their, they get their license and they think they know everything.
Expert.
Expert, thank you. They say an R33, which is a pool and a lake and it's a townhouse and the pool they're talking about is a community pool. No, that is not an R33, okay? So I'm just saying, I just, I want to make sure that we're not going back in time with this 1968 whatever and hurting anybody that may have been for forty years or fifty years doing it.
Well, is there something that you can come up with and make it a little bit more?
I mean, do we?
Clear?
You can't grandfather in an illegal use.
That's right, you can't because it's illegal.
So if someone was here prior to 1968, you can clarify and say if they were here prior to 1968 and they were doing this, they're grandfathered in.
Oh, well, I, that, that's one person in the whole town.
You know, and I didn't mean to open up a can of worms with this one.
Well, that I vote we confiscate all their stuff.
All we're doing, it doesn't even really require five votes because we're not, we're not.
Changing anything.
Changing anything. We're just moving it from one section of the code to the other so it can be easily found.
That's fine. When you've moved it, that's fine.
I thought you were clarifying.
It clarifies existing language.
But hold on, you're not changing this text, you're just moving it to a different section?
The text clarifies it slightly, but it's the same law. It's just, it makes it clearer so that no one can question it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, we're not.
And when we see the comparative language, so I know.
Yeah, Jeff can get that.
Because I'm very picky. So if we know that the language is close or duplicative or clarifying, it helps if I see A and then B.
Agree.
I mean, just before you, it'll come back to us again, is that correct? I mean, we'll be able to see it. So when it comes back, if we could just see the before and the after, that helps me. Otherwise, I don't have a problem.
Okay. You're not taking official action on this. You had tasked me in December with trying to come up with a bit of a summary of where you were, what you guys liked, what you didn't like. This completes that discussion. Now it's a question of where do we go from here? And what public input you want at what time on this? Whether you wish us to draft an ordinance that reflects what you've, the guidance you've given us tonight? If you want to sit on this and give it a little bit more thought. At this point, I'm just looking for a little bit more direction from council, whether you wish us, I mean, we can draft an ordinance, get a draft copy to you without scheduling it for a reading and give you some time to consider it if you'd like to do that.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
See the language and let us.
Counselor member, what my suggestion was, based on the input tonight, we draft a revised ordinance for your consideration. We don't rush it to the agenda. We allow you some time to digest it, get some input from the residents, consider it. And we'll schedule it for a reading at such time as you're comfortable. Does that make sense?
As long as we continue to move forward, otherwise I could read Luisa Chong's letter into the.
Yeah, just a heads up, I'm not opening this up to the public. This is just for discussion up here.
Certainly be ample opportunity to discuss as it goes further. And the document that you were given tonight has been shared with the public as well.
Good.
So I know that if they have concerns or questions or issues, you and I will certainly hear from them as is appropriate.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes.
Yep. All right.
Good. Andy, good job in trying to get this to the next step. Thank you.
Need a motion for approval of minutes, please.
We approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Somebody want a second?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay. Any public comments on approval of minutes? You've corrected them in the past. Seeing none, back to us. No additional changes for us? Call the question.
Counselor member Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor member Hartman?
Yes.
Counselor member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Accept it.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for coming out.
Muchas gracias.